Okay, you are live.
All right, thank you. Good evening, I'm calling to order the Wednesday, September 21, 2022, meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a virtual meeting only through Zoom. Those wishing to participate remotely can do so by accessing the meeting link at www.southbirltown.com/remotemeetings. On our agenda this evening, the first item actually we have is we have a public hearing for 241 and 245 Turnpike Road. So Katie, I don't know, will you read it or is Laura?
Yep, I'm gonna read it. I'm gonna run through this evening so Laura can see how it goes and then up and running next time.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, so I'll read it into public record now. "The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing via a virtual Zoom meeting Wednesday, September 21, 2022, at 7:00 PM with regards to the petitions of Park House 241 LLC, 241 to 245 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow for indoor recreational use with an accessory use of a private garage for more than three cars and a variance for the proposed building to encroach the 75-foot front setback to construct a two-story membership club for car enthusiasts. The property is located in the Business Highway and Residence Aid Districts. Relief is requested under Section 174-85C-11, 174-85E-3A, 174-25A-2, and 174-25B-3." So I see Nadia here, so I'm gonna bring her over. Hi. Can you bring Kathy Garrahan over too? She's our attorney and I think she'll do the little introduction.
Okay, absolutely.
And is it you, Nadia, that's gonna be sharing your screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make you co-host as well.
Okay, yeah, it does look like I have the option to do that.
Very good.
Says host as disabled participants screen sharing.
You should see it in a second.
Okay. There we go. Okay. I'm doing that, which hopefully... Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Excellent, and I'll put it in this one, so it's a little bigger. Okay. Great, I think we're ready for Kathy.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Catherine Garrahan from the law firm about it, Jean Dewey. I'm here on behalf of Park House 241 LLC for a proposed project at 241 and 245 Turnpike Road. With me tonight are Najah Stratten and Stephanie Conover from Park House, the owner and developer, David LaPointe from Beals and Thomas, civil engineers, Chad Wollman of Balance Architects, and Andrew Arsenal of Viness and Associates for Transportation. Slide two, please. As read into the record, the two requests before the board for this project are a special permit for use in the Business Highway District to allow indoor recreational use with an accessory use of private garage for more than three vehicles and a variance to allow minimum front yard setback of 43 feet where a minimum of 75 feet is required in the BH zone. I'll also mention that should you approve these requests, the applicant would then apply for necessary permits to other town boards, including to the Planning Board for Major Site Plan Review and a lower impact development special permit, as well as an A&R Plan endorsement for lot merger for the two lots involved with this application. Also, a notice of intent and a stormwater management permit would be applied for to the Conservation Commission and any applicable permitting from the Board of Health. The project will also require issuance of a state highway access permit from Mass DOT for construction activities or utility connections that will occur on the state highway layout along Route 9. To start, before we get into more technical presentations, Park House would like to introduce you to themselves as a company and what they hope to bring to Southborough. So I'll hand off to Najah, who will continue with the slides.
Great. So first, I just also wanted to say thank you to the board for taking time to review our application. My name is Najah, I'm a member of the Park House team. I did want to take a couple minutes just to introduce our team and tell you a little bit about our proposed project. We are the current owners of 241 and 245 Turnpike Road. We bought it last December. The Park House brand was created specifically for our car storage concept, but my father started Transatlantic, our family real estate business, about 25 years ago, and my grandfather worked in real estate for many years before that. There are four members in our team, so my father is slowly trying to tiptoe into retirement without us noticing. He's still involved, but a bit more of an advisory role now. I've been working for the family business on and off my whole life, full-time for the past 11 years. My sister, Zariah, focuses on our Miami property. We're hoping to open a Park House in Miami, too. And Stephanie, who's on the call, has been with the company for over 20 years and is all but another sister in the family. So I wanted to give this presentation today mostly because our use is not very well-known. Like, if I tell you we're gonna build a self-storage facility, you know exactly what it looks like, you sort of know how it's gonna be used. We have a bit of a tougher job with car condos. They do exist around the country, but there aren't any in this area yet. So what is Park House? So we're a community for car enthusiasts. The proposed building consists of 32 garage units that'll be sold as non-residential condominiums, and the units are intended to house people's vehicle collections. We plan to build a clubhouse where the community can gather and socialize, and the units are designed to face inward to facilitate sort of the community feel. So a little bit more about the proposed units. They'll be designed to hold between two and six cars. They'll have 20-foot-high ceilings to accommodate mezzanines as a sort of hangout area. We'll build out bathrooms with plumbing for optional showers and then other options that users can build a little kitchenette or hangout areas. I put a floor plan in. I'll let the architects go into more detail if you want to see it, but I just wanted to highlight the interior drive aisles that are in the property and the fact that all the garages open inward. In general, we believe that Park House will make a pretty great neighbor. It's a visually attractive building, we think, especially compared to what's currently there, although I realize that's a pretty low bar to set. It's a low-impact use. There will not be many cars coming in and out on a daily basis. The internal drive aisles means that most of the onsite activity is actually happening inside the building, not outside it. And a low use on public resources. We're not straining the public schools or anything like that. Because the units are owned, they'll generate real estate taxes, and the unit owners are more invested in the local community. And it'll provide people from outside Southborough another reason to come visit, even restaurants, participate in other local businesses. We do really like this site in particular. It's been standing vacant for a long time, and we're pretty excited to put something beautiful on there. It's easy access to 90 and 495. Because it's on Route 9, our users can access it without having to drive through the residential neighborhoods, which I think is appealing for everyone involved. And with Rad Exotics as our neighbor, it actually presents some exciting opportunities for us and potential synergies. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about who we are or the Park House concept, but otherwise I'll hand it back to Kathy to get into more detail about the application.
Did anybody want to ask Najah any questions regarding Park House before we get on to the next part?
Thank you for the introduction.
Awesome.
So, before the engineer and architect present to you, I will give some orientation to the site and the reasons we believe that you may make the required findings to grant the special permit and variance requested. First, for site orientation, the property is currently two assessor lots. It was formally used for different uses. The property just west of Parkerville Road is just west of Parkerville Road on the north side of 9, in between 251 Turnpike, which is the Rad Exotics use currently, and 225 Turnpike, the Southborough Executive Park. A very small part of the property on the north side, which is not proposed to be developed, is located in a residential district, but most of the property is in the Business Highway District. And as I believe I stated earlier, the applicant proposes to merge these two lots into one lot by an A&R application to the Planning Board should you approve this project and should the Planning Board grant the other requests that will be made to it. Next slide, please, Najah. Here we provided some views. On the left, you see the views of the property showing the old Andrea's Restaurant at 241 Turnpike and on the right showing the office building at 245 Turnpike. Next slide, Najah. Here's another view from across Turnpike Road showing the two existing buildings in the land. And next, next slide, Najah. This is the proposed site plan, which would develop the site as a merged lot, which the civil engineer will present in more detail in a few minutes. Next slide, please. This slide gives a rendering of the proposed project in relation to its neighbors to help you see how the proposed setback aligns with other uses. So you can see the line going in front of the proposed project in the middle and over to the Red Exotics on the left and the Office Park on the right. So, we wanted to just briefly sum up why we believe that you can make the required findings for a special permit for use. The project's in keeping with the criteria set forth in the zoning code and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the code. It satisfies criteria set forth for location. It's appropriate for the proposed use and proposed as the proposed use and proposed structures will not impair the status of the neighborhood. The character in the neighborhood is long-included, commercial and automobile-related uses. The new waterline connections will replace the services now serving the existing buildings. It's designed to minimize grading and clearing and to be accessed at two different levels to accommodate the existing slope. The project will be reviewed by the Conservation Commission and Planning Board, and vehicular traffic to and from the property will be in keeping with existing traffic volume in the area. Next slide, please. The project satisfies criteria for activity type and mix because the applicant proposes to provide a use that contributes to the diversity of services available locally. It will bring an underused and currently vacant pair of properties back to use with a use consistent with the longstanding neighborhood use in a neighborhood which has a long history of automobile-related uses. The Farrell Bobo was next door many years. The project will increase property tax revenue while providing a unique service to car enthusiasts. The units will be managed by Park House, subject to rules and regulations to ensure that the use is consistent with a high-quality community for car enthusiasts and consistent with conditions of the board for the proposed use. The use is an indoor use, which will not disrupt nearby residential neighborhood to the north of the property. The project satisfies criteria set forth for visual consequences set forth in the code because the use and structure will not detract from scenic views on public ways and is designed to minimize visibility of parking and services through site arrangement and screening. The use provides an attractive structure, which will be set back from the roadways, consistent with surrounding properties. It's the most closely located residential properties located to the north and shielded from the proposed development by a tree line and natural buffers. Next slide, please, Najah. The project satisfies the criteria set forth for access. The proposed use and structure are not expected to increase traffic to the area surrounding the location. Vehicular movement to, from, and within the project site is designed to be safe and convenient and arranged not to disturb abutting properties. The applicant's transportation assessment states, given the low volume of traffic that is predicted to be generated by the project, the project is not expected to result in a material impact on motorist delays or vehicle queuing over the existing conditions. The applicant has proposed adequate off-street parking to be further reviewed by the Planning Board. The project will require the issue of a state highway access permit, as mentioned. Next slide, please, Najah. The project satisfies criteria set forth for development rate in the code because the development will not outpace the town's ability to provide off-site services, including schools, water, or road capacity. The project site is already served by adequate municipal services such as water and other facilities sufficient for the proposed use. Although the project will result in an increased use of water and electricity over what currently exists with the vacant properties, it is not anticipated the project will result in an increased need for services from Southborough. The project satisfies criteria set forth in state law for special permits under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, because the use or structure is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code. The zoning code allows a range of commercial and business uses in the Business Highway District, either as of right or pursuant to special permit, including indoor recreation, athletic, or exercise facility by special permit, which is the special permit we've requested. The proposed use is compatible with neighboring commercial uses. Next slide, please. And to briefly sum up why we believe you may make the required findings to grant dimensional variance for front setback, there are circumstances related to the soil conditions, topography, or shape of land or structures, especially affecting the property and its structures, that literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship to the applicant. First, there are unique circumstances not generally affecting the zoning districts. The shape of land is quite unique, and the topography is also unusual with a wetland buffer in the rear and a sharp slope between the eastern and western portions of the property. In terms of hardships, the buffer and slope present challenges for building location and design, necessitating driveway entrances on two different floors into the structure. Conditions require improvements to be located nearer to the southern boundary line to accommodate the slope and allow for the required dimensional setbacks elsewhere on the property, as well as adequate access for the proposed use. The prior owner tried for many years without success to reuse or sell the site due to its unique circumstances. And the existing buildings on the property are poor to average condition and have been difficult for the prior owner to market, given the unique conditions of the property. So it has been partially vacant and underutilized for many years. The existing structures would be extremely difficult to design around for a new project. The project size of 32 units is required for feasibility, as well as marketability for the membership community. The structure's depth is required in order to accommodate the internal drive aisle to the units, and reduction in size would end up causing the project to lose half of the proposed units, making the project not viable. Next slide, please. The relief allowing a 43-foot minimum front yard setback for the proposed use may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. The setback is consistent with the setback of nearby properties along Route 9 and will be set further back than the existing setback at the property. The proposed use will be up-to-date, will provide a landscape buffer, and improved access in egress. The project site will have the benefit of stormwater management, subject to approval by the Conservation Commission and site plan review by the Planning Board. The project will bring an underutilized visible property along Route 9 back into economic productivity. The project offers a unique service to the area, and the closest adjacent residential structures continue to be separated from the project site by the tree line and dense vegetation and are located uphill and separated and are significantly further than 50 feet from the developed portion of the property. So with that, I'd like to hand off to our civil engineer, Dave LaPointe. And after his presentation, if the board wishes, the architect is also prepared to give you a presentation, and then anyone on the team is available to answer your questions. I'm not sure that Dave LaPointe was added as a presenter, so perhaps that needs to be done.
Yep, I think so.
Yep, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Again, for the record, my name's Dave LaPointe with Beals and Thomas of Southborough. We are civil engineers and site designers involved with this project. Kathy gave a bit of an overview, as well as Najah, about the project, but I can just kind of walk you through the site plan a little bit to give you a little bit more detail, but as was mentioned earlier, if we are to receive approval through this board, we will be making a filing with the Planning Board as well, which will cover a lot more of the detailed design elements of the project. But as has been described, the site is located on the corner of Turnpike Road and Parkerville Road. There will be a driveway into and exiting the property from each of those roadways. The intent is that, obviously, the driveway exiting out to Route 9 will be a right turn out only, but also the driveway out to Parkerville Road is intended to be a right turn out so that cars will head out on Parkerville and then go immediately onto Route 9 to go on their way. Again, so we're not introducing traffic into the adjacent residential neighborhood. But there are external driveways on the sides of the buildings. There will be an entry on the eastern side of the building into the lower level to access the units at the lower level of the building, and there will be another entrance exit to the building on the western side of the building, which will access the upper level of the building. There are no internal driveways within the building, but there is that driveway that runs parallel to Turnpike Road, which would provide access between the two levels if, for some reason, a potential owner of the units maybe has a unit on the top floor and the lower floor and wanted to move cars between the two. They could do such by following that driveway within the property. There will be some parking spaces on the exterior as well for visitors, or what may happen as envisioned is that some units will be owned by people that keep their exotic cars, per se, here, and they will use their day-to-day drivers to take them back and forth to work or whatnot, which they'd park at their own house. But then maybe if they wanted to come and take their convertible for a drive or something, they may drive over here, park temporarily outside while they get their convertible out, and then go put their day-to-day driver back in their unit. But also, like I said, for visitor parking, any visitors that may come to see one of the owners in their units, as well as along the backside of the site. We do have an access drive along there mainly to provide fire access, as well as we will have some dumpsters and that sort of thing at the backside of the property screened from any views from Parkerville or Turnpike Road. As you can see in the site plan as well, and as was mentioned earlier, there are some wetlands along that northern side of the property, which the slope leading down to it is limiting some of the area that we would have to work with, but we're currently working through some of the designs for the stormwater management and septic system, which again will all be designed and calculations provided to the Planning Board and other boards for review and approval if we receive approval from this board as this initial step. Existing utilities obviously serve those buildings that are currently on the site, but we'll be upgrading those utilities as well, primarily the electric and water service. As I mentioned, septic systems will be installed on site, as well as stormwater management. The building is a two-story building. You saw those photos and images at the beginning of the presentation, so it's a very attractive building that's been designed and seems as though it'd be very in-character with the other buildings along Route 9, as well as the usage for car enthusiasts, as was mentioned again, the Rad Exotics next door, and there's other car dealerships located along Route 9 in this area as well. So that's just a quick summary of the overall site design, but if you have further questions, be happy to answer those as well.
I just have one question. It's probably on here, but it's too small for me to read. How, I know you said two stories, but what's the total height, like the highest point in the building?
That's, let me see if we have that on our plan here. Chad, may I? Yeah, we have it listed as just about a little over 38 feet, give or take. So we're under the maximum 45-foot building height.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So why don't we start with Doris? Doris, do you have any questions regarding the planned use? Or the application? Doris, you with us?
Doris, you're muted. You're muted.
Hi, first of all, thank you for bringing this to the board and trying to revitalize this property and bring it back on our tax rolls. I have two questions, one probably directed towards civil engineer. In the application, there's mention of parking, and in one mentioning of the parking, they could shed more light on it when there's events, which will lead to my second question. They're arranging event parking, or so that's part one, and part two is something to the effect of the application that reads, we're gonna, maybe I've got, there's 15 spaces. Could you please describe where those spaces are more clearly? I just couldn't understand because it was in two different sections of the application. And then I have one second question, but I assume civil can answer.
Sure, sure. The onsite parking that's outside of the building is located along the, there's a parallel parking along that driveway that runs parallel with Turnpike Road. And then there's another four spaces on each side, actually four spaces on one side and three spaces on the other of the driveway that comes in off of Parkerville Road. The applicant is also working with the neighbor, the office building to the east, to arrange if there are gatherings here where there may be more visitors than can be accommodated by the parking spaces on site to allow some parking to take place in their existing lot. And you can see we've shown a crosswalk across Parkerville Road to provide pedestrian access between the two properties.
Okay, okay, so it would be the building adjacent across Parkerville. So where I was getting some confusion was the cars will not be on Parkerville.
That's, yes, no, there wouldn't be parking on Parkerville Road. That's correct.
All right, so then, in general, and a second question, maybe it's just a Najah trying to understand this unique use of this building, which is nonexistent here in the Northeast. You talk about in the application, events, and I see that we have, we're gonna have 32 bathrooms, 32 kitchenettes. Could you talk about, since you have a Miami property, what those events are gonna look like? Just a little bit more descriptive. Just a little bit more descriptive. Yeah.
So first to clarify, we don't have a Miami one yet. That's the other location that we're trying to pull one.
Okay, all right.
The idea is that it is for members only, so it's never gonna be more than the thirty-two unit owners. But the concern is if all thirty-two show up at once, is there enough parking on site to accommodate them if they already have their garages full? So not as maybe once a month or every couple of months, we have an event where really all thirty-two unit owners are potentially showing up at the same time. Where, you know, they bring their fancy car and they hang out on site. And we just want to make sure that in those moments where you're using it during the week, you know, you're only gonna have a handful of people at once.
So like in the clubhouse, the clubhouse is gonna locate visually in the plan. So that clubhouse, and just to be honest about that, the clubhouse is gonna get a liquor license? Does that sound, sound like I'm off asking a silly question?
No, so it's not a silly question and I'm not, I'm gonna say I'm not a hundred percent confident with my answer, but if they're not selling alcohol, my understanding is they don't have to have one. This is with no prior research on this. But that is what I, like, this is not gonna be a bar where they're selling alcohol. It's the same as, actually, I don't know, but that like a private club where people are just hanging out.
Till there'll be, there'll be alcohol use, okay. That, that was my question and maybe I'll just defer to other board members. In regards to the offset, I think it's in harmony with the property and it's not as close as the old Andreas. So I could see that even visually with the nice, I really do appreciate the thorough application, although it was quite thick to read through. So that's very helpful for the meeting. Dave, you can turn this over to another board member.
Okay. Paul, do you, do you have some, any questions?
Yeah, I guess. And some concerns. So I, in general, I kind of, I think this is pretty interesting and I like the, I like the concept. I understand the concept. Like a little unsure of the, of, of like the necessity for all the bathrooms, showers and in kitchenettes if it's a, if it's a car club. It just kind of, that kind of confuses me to be honest. It just kind of seems like that could be, you know, almost going in another direction. So that's my first, I guess, question or concern. Second is, you know, some of the, the, then again, in, in general, I think this is, as I said, I like this, it's, it's interesting. But the, the hardships that are being thrown at us there, I'm not quite following how that is a hardship that necessitates, you know, what we're, what we're doing here. It just seems like this is being designed because it's what wants to be designed and then backing in and excusing it with hardships. And I don't, I don't, I don't quite, you know, see what the hardships are here. I do like the, I guess the right in, right only on Parkerville. And obviously the only other op, you know, you have to do that on Route Nine. So it doesn't seem like that would be like too much of an impact on Parkerville or, or traffic in general on Route Nine. Doesn't seem like a high-volume thing. I guess my last thought is I'd be curious if there's, you know, if there's a butters that have, you know, concerns you know, about this or, you know, approval or disapproval of it. Those are my thoughts.
I'm happy to comment on the bathroom question. It comes a lot from having visited some of these similar sites in other parts of the country and it's, we try so hard not to use this word, but they sort of end up being man caves, like that, that it's a place where you can hang out, right? So you have your own unit where you have a few cars and you have, you know, somewhere where you can, if you wanna serve some food, if you wanna have a friend over, if you like, it's, it, they're sort of intended to be self-contained units to be used in addition to them gathering place in the clubhouse. And so in order to achieve that, you know, we get very varying responses of like, why would you need a shower in there? And of course I'd wanna shower in there because I go there after work and I can shower and change and go wherever I wanna go afterwards. So I think we're just trying to accommodate sort of the different ways that people may use the units. I am probably not the most qualified one to talk about hardships in terms of the physical layout of the space. But the only thing I'll say there is there's a certain number of square feet we have to achieve to make the project viable. And given the wetlands on the backside, if we're pushed so far back on Route Nine, we sort of run out of enough square feet to make that work. But there's probably a more technical answer to that than what I am giving.
If I may, I'm wondering if, if anyone on the team has a good picture of the slope because I'm not sure.
Chad said, or was that, did Dave, did you have something?
We may. I think Chad had a, maybe kind of like a, I was under the impression like a 3D model kind of thing. The, the point though of it is that the, the site is challenging because the, of the grade change across the site. There's about a twenty-foot grade change from the southwest corner, which is basically the corner adjacent to Turnpike Road to the northeast corner over by Parkerville. And so that's where the twenty-foot grade change is kind of dictating the two levels of the building with the driveway at each level. As well as was mentioned earlier, the wetlands along the back edge or the north, the northern edge of the property within a significant slope that drops down to that wetland. So that's limiting how much development can actually happen towards the back of the property where it needs to be kind of pulled forward a little bit.
Paul, does that, does that answer your questions or not quite?
Like, to be honest, not really, no. Because, I mean, my, I guess my wondering here is, I mean, this like, as far as saying that's a hardship, I, I, I don't, I just don't see it like you're, you're designing what you wanna design and then saying, oh, we designed this because we had, this is like what we had to fit on there and make it economically viable. But I don't see that as a, like, I don't know, I'm, I'm just not quite seeing that as a, as a hardship to say, okay, let's grant the variance, but that's, that's.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that what they're saying is because of the topography, they don't have what they would want in the back, right? And, and yeah, you're right, they are saying to make it economically viable, they, they feel like they need that much space. It does seem like if you went back to that.
You're, 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 and again, I, and I'm, I'm, again, I'm not trying to be difficult. I mean, I appreciate taking a site that hasn't been used in many, many years and using it for something that looks said pretty, pretty interesting. But if, if, if the site doesn't, doesn't work, then, you know, choose another site. Like that's, that's what I, that, that's what I'm understanding here. That's.
Oh, if I may, and I don't know if Chad was added as a presenter so he could show the, the slope. But these are issues that, you know, anybody coming to develop would have with these properties and they have sat there for a long time. However, it is still a great site. You know, it's, it's on Turnpike Road. It's, you know, in a commercial district. So the, you know, obviously if, if it could have been designed without that front setback, you know, that they would have tried to do it. It was, you know, very tight and you know, trying to figure out that, that back wetland area. But it's not a huge request, so you know, the applicant's very excited about this site. But, you know, give, I think that the many years that it hasn't been developed speak to this being a unique property and having unusual conditions.
If I, if I could, you, you, you had something, a slide earlier where you should, you compared what the setback was to adjacent properties. Do we know exactly what, like, what, what is the setback at two twenty-five or at, at two fifty-seven? Do we know? How, how do they, how do they compare?
So at two fifty, fifty-one, that one, now granted, we haven't done a survey of that, but just an approximate measurement is about thirty-seven feet setback from the, from the right-of-way to the front of that building. And as was mentioned earlier, the existing building that's currently on the site that this would be replacing, that building is only about twenty-eight feet from the right-of-way. Two twenty-five. I can see if I can come up with that number. That's, that's maybe about sixty, sixty-six, sixty-seven feet, somewhere around there. So even it looks like that one. Granted, it's a little bit further back, but that still looks like that does not comply with the seventy-five foot front yard setback as well.
I do. Paul, any other questions?
No further questions.
Craig, do you wanna, do you have some questions?
Sure. Is there any safety concern or is there going to be any sort of barrier to prevent cars coming off of Route Nine in an accident and plowing into the parked cars that are within the setback? It's. These parallel spaces that are along Route Nine?
It's hard to see there, but it's actually sloped. I might let Dave answer that more, but it's not actually parallel to the road.
Yeah, well. But what about the first, you know, it slopes up, but at some point in time, it's pretty much there.
Yeah, I, I, I follow what you're saying. Yeah, I, we haven't really got to that level of the design at this point, but there could be something that could be added like a guardrail. We, we intend to include some trees along there certainly for some, you know, to improve the overall appearance of the site. But yeah, maybe a guardrail would be a, a suitable solution to prevent something like that, like you said, from a car coming into the site off of Route Nine.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then where's the wetlands barrier? It's hard to see because the plan's so small and the, the scans that we got are a little blurry. So that kind of squiggly line in there?
Yeah, it runs along the whole entire northern edge of the property and, and kind of expands out at the, especially up at the northwestern corner.
Okay, it's the, the kind of plotted line that has angles in it and stuff.
Yes, yep.
Okay. All right, and then where's the, where's the section of the property that goes into residential, the residential district?
I think it's over here, is that right?
It's actually that, that portion up in the northwest corner, exactly where that wetland is. It's actually, it, most of that wetland is what's in that residential zoning district.
Okay, so you're not building in there at all?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And I do like the use. It's, it's similar to how people equip their hangars for planes. You know, they have, the plane comes in, they have space, they have a bathroom, they have, you know, places to hang out. It, it does, for lack of a better term, based on who I knew had a plane at one point in time, was definitely his man cave. So I totally get that concept. And then will there be something in the, in the community's rules about parking cars overnight on, on the exterior?
We haven't fully developed the condo docs yet, but absolutely that kind of request is easy enough to put in there. And I think it's not an unreasonable ask of the unit owners. That's sort of why they have their units, so they're not parking things outside. They're also the types of cars that I don't think they'll wanna be parking outside, but.
No, it's not, it's not the cars that they're trying to keep. It's their, like the car that they use to get there. You know, if they're gonna park their car and take their fancy car on a, to a show or something like that. We don't want their car sitting outside in the parking lot for a couple of days or something like that.
An unreasonable request for sure.
And so can, again, this is hard to see on the plans just because they got a little blurry. Where are the, what are the various setbacks, the, the pinch points on the setbacks and how far are they? Can you, if you could blow it up or point out where they are and where your pinch points are?
Yeah, is there any way we can blow this up? I, I suffered with the same issue that Craig's speaking to as well. I just don't know if this, this, this can be enlarged so I can read it.
I think potentially if Dave, we transfer driving over to you, you might be able to pull up. Cause I just have it in the PowerPoint, which I think I can't easily expand.
Okay.
Otherwise I can try to pull it up.
See if I can share.
Yeah, I, I'm not allowed yet.
Stop sharing.
If someone can give me permission, I can try.
So Dave, I made you co-host. It might take a minute, but you should see the share screen option below.
Okay. Okay. Can you see the site plan again?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the.
Again, if you could make it a little bit bigger, you might have to scroll around a bit more, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
There we go.
Oh, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so this, this should clearly show you the, the seventy-five foot setback, front yard setback line comes across right here. And this is where the building extends beyond that. Where it exceeds that, obviously the seventy-five foot front yard setback. The other side yard setbacks and, and rear yard setback, if you kind of just follow that, that long dashed line, it's a continuous line that wraps all the way around. You can see that the building is within that, within that line. So it's only the front yard setback. That's like, as you refer to it as kind of the pinch point. Or the, where it exceeds it.
Yep.
Okay, so basically the, what's the, what's the size of that envelope? If, if you were to just maximize the, that envelope? Do you know what the square footage of that envelope is?
The square footage of this portion.
The build, the buildable envelope. If, if you were to abide by the setbacks.
I, yeah, I don't know what that would be.
Fifteen, twenty percent of the entire footprint?
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there's maybe twenty percent of it that's outside of that envelope, but yeah. Okay. Yeah, I don't have any, I mean, if, if, if you'd be willing to accept, I mean, planning board will probably do this as well in terms of overnight parking and a guardrail on that parallel, at least the initial parallel parking along the highway. You know, I'm, I'm all for it. I think the, I think it is hard with, with the slope and the encroachment of wetlands and everything else that it is. It would be difficult to do something that would work in today's, in today's market on the site without relief. So I'm also not entirely sure why we need seventy-five feet of a setback on Route Nine. But that's a different question.
I, I did a survey. I went, you know, there was only one building that was back seventy-five feet.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Four, six buildings.
Yeah, it's, it's more of a, you know, the hardship is that you'd be held to a standard that no one else anywhere near you is abiding by.
Right, you know, Greg, we're kind of in agreement on it. It's, Andreas was closer.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Actually, you can see it. It's still listed on the plan underneath. It's like right by the twenty-four wide access drive. That's the footprint.
Can I ask a couple?
Can I ask a couple questions of your?
Um, yeah, thanks, Jamie.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Craig, did you have more?
Nope, I'm all done.
Oh, okay. Um I may be reading these plans wrong. It's very possible, but as I understand it off on the Parkerville side. Is the first floor entrance to that interior driveway. And the second floor is. On the other side. And. I'm assuming that that's. You're able to do that due to the slope. Is that? Incorrect or correct?
Yes, that's that's correct.
So the slope actually isn't really a hardship. It actually is helpful. Is that? An incorrect statement or a correct statement?
What I would say is we sort of reversed engineered the building to accommodate the slope.
Right.
Um we we went through a bunch of iterations on how to sort of make the most of this plot of land, and that seemed to be the one that worked the best.
Okay, I but but you do have cars on the second level, right?
Yeah.
And you don't have to pay an elevator, correct? Because of the slope? Okay, um. So yeah, so I guess I don't see. First of all, I I love the idea and I think the building looks great. Um. So I I really don't have a problem with the project. I guess I just don't see the slope as a hardship in in this sense. I think you guys have. In a sense, manufactured the building to to make it a positive. Um. My other question was, I'm still confused on the events. Is this something that Park House says like, you know, come on Saturday, the fifteenth and? You know, we'll. We'll have a a band or something and everyone can come sit in their spot to meet each other, or is are you just saying? That potentially all these owners could have people there on Saturdays and have and have their own events?
So no, I I don't think it would be for owners to have their own events. The idea would be that, yeah, Park House says, okay, all you thirty two owners, we're gonna have a gathering on. You know, Saturday, let's say, um and maybe we'll have, you know, the Porsche dealership show up because there's a new. Horse that we think you all be interested in and you can hang out and look at cars and. And go home.
I see. Okay, I just wasn't clear on that. Thank you. Um, I think those are my questions.
Um, Mike, I don't think we've heard from you. Do you have any questions?
Well, it's amazing. Uh it's great. Honestly, everyone has kind of touched upon some of my pressure points, whether it be the events. Uh I share uh most of my board members just absolute uh I find it a unique. Use of the property. Uh from someone who used to work at the Andrea Restaurants uh when I. And I'm really glad to see the site hopefully being. Redeveloped. Um I do want to speak to some of my board members uh discussions about hardships. I do think. Almost always on any petition. Uh you know, the petitioner will back into the hardship. As a result, uh to kind of support their application for. Uh variants, just because to meet those criteria. So there's always a little bit of. You know, language and 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 arguments to. Quote unquote, meet the hardship, but. From from an experiential perspective, these two lots have been sitting vacant for. Decades and as a result, um clearly. There are issues with short soil shape and topography. That have lent to the absence of development. And so given uh what the petitioner is proposing, the intended use. Uh I I roll my eyes with the seventy five foot setback, just like Laura said, like, well, you know, who who else has that that's meeting that that? Uh and and so I share a lot of these uh points, but I feel that. That given the history that that lends to the argument that. Uh clearly, the space in and of itself is a is a hardship. Otherwise, this would have been developed some time ago. And so I do think. That there. While there is always some kind of backing into a hardship, that clearly, given the history of this location that. Uh hardships exist and especially for a front setback. Uh on something like that. So that's but everyone else has hit on the point, so I don't want to take up more of all of our collective times to rehash what's been stated. Okay, thanks, Mike. Um. Yeah, so I I guess I my question is about like the nature of what goes on in the in the car condos. I I I think initially I was thinking this is a place for people to work on their cars. But I'm getting the impression that's really not what it is. What what would the that sort of policy be? I mean, is that is this a place for people to work on their cars? Or is it really just storage? And and if it's work, what kind of work do they do?
So we haven't. Fully gotten into that yet. There's been conversations about. Um whether we need to put in floor drains, gas oil separators, all that stuff, but people really are working on the cars. I would imagine. People are not changing their oil in these units. They may be tinkering. They may be, you know, my husband just was changing out the headlights on his. Cobra because that's what he does for fun with his cars and like that sort of level of changing I can see. Um I don't think you're getting people. This is not an auto body shop, right? Like, that's just not the kind of user here. Um the rest of it really is just having a place that is not home to hang out and. Have your collection. Um it's I'd say more than just storage because the idea is not to. Leave these things there all winter and just never see them again. It's sort of the opportunity for people who can't drive their cars in the winter to still be able to. I'm not as much of a car person as some of the people would be using this, so I'm gonna say like, sit in your car, whatever you do with your car in the winter, but. You know, just hang out with your collection a bit.
Okay. And and the other question is, you're describing these as condos, so. The people that buy the condos are do they? Do they then have the ability to customize their space to do what they what they like with it?
Yeah, I mean, so within reason, that's where condo docs will come into effect again, but yeah, so they're buying more or less of white box with a. Bathroom in it, you know, like with the ability to then fit it out however they want.
Okay. All right, um. Yeah, I I I just to agree with what Mike said, I think a lot of the the uh the concerns have already been been addressed. Um. You know, I do feel as as far as the setback goes, I I I I'm in agreement, I think, with most of the board, if not all of it. I. If you're if it's pretty similar to what's done in the area, I just I don't. I have a hard time seeing how that's how that's. You you why we would need to enforce that. Um it is a good question why it's there to begin with. Um. And I mean, I I guess I see the hardship as. You know, if you had the seventy five uh foot. Setback, you'd be kind of you wouldn't be able to make the building the size that you want. Um as a way I'm interpreting, I I think Jamie's right to say that the the hill actually works to your benefit in terms of getting cars to the second floor. Um. But um yeah, in general, I I I don't I don't see the 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 setback as an issue. Um. But um I actually. I'm kind of curious to get a little bit more of the pulse of the board. Paul, do you? Do you think the hard you find the hardship thing to be something that's a? Uh you know, you know, a a bridge you can't quite cross, or is that you just want to say you don't really think it's really a hardship?
I mean. It's it's. It's not a bridge for me. I just I don't I don't see it's a hardship. Again, I. I I I do real estate work. I do development work if. I mean, I know I if I have a idea for a parcel and it doesn't fit on the parcel, then I don't put that on that parcel and I look at another one.
Right.
Um. So there's no one. You know, no one's being forced to build this here. I I understand it's vacant. It hasn't had a good use in a while, has it no use in a while, and I. Think this is a really. I like this use. I think it's pretty cool, actually, but I'm not I'm not seeing where, you know. It again, and I the statement was made, it's not economically viable to do it unless it's to this scale. But that doesn't mean, you know, you go out and do it then you then like.
Well, then you later.
Then you look at another you look at another parcel, but it's. Um it's it's certainly not a um. It's 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 certainly not a. Unpassable bridge type situation for him.
So if I can, it's okay.
Further question I have is. The I don't know why I'm hung up on this, but the whole thing with the the bathrooms, the showers, the kitchenettes is.
We lost you, Paul.
Yeah, we lost you.
I think he stopped talking.
No, no.
No.
Did we lose him?
I said, I see him.
He he's moving.
Can't hear you.
Social gathering place is is that like? Missed me that. Question is, is this is that like? That's an okay allowable use. That's is that that's anything that we need to?
Um. Yeah, I.
Boy.
I might chime in on that. Um. You know, I my my understanding is that the Board of Health will assess this as a recreation facility. At with a certain amount of square footage and dictate what size septic system is going to be needed. Whether you do that with one toilet or forty toilets, it's still based on the occupancy and the use. So it's really it's it's not. I don't think that's our call. That's going to be Board of Health in getting this system approved.
Yeah, I I can share with Craig on that. Right, and and to be clear, we we already know there's going to be additional boards that are going to review this planning board.
Oh, yeah.
Conservation Board, Board of Health. Uh I would think like the, you know, my question regarding what work you're gonna do there, you probably, I I I'm gonna guess you might need some kind of permitting if you're gonna be. You know, changing out uh oil or 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 antifreeze or things like that. So I I would think that that would be something that. You know, probably be be captured on other boards. Um I I I again, I I think we should. I don't know. I to me, it weighs fairly heavily that. That these lots have been sitting vacant for as long as I've been in town and and well before that, I think.
Yeah, and I. I will say that I and I've I've used this. Example in deals that I've worked on. You know, yes, the setback and the topography. But another hardship is actually the fact that you're being held to a standard that no one else is.
That's exactly.
The norm of the district is to not be seventy five feet off of the the lot line. Then the hardship is being forced to do it. You know, the the pinch point on the buildable envelope right there against Parkerville. Is really narrow, like you're not going to get any commercial building that's going to fit in that pinch.
That that that's it. I mean, and Andrea has been. Anyway, you touched on it, yep.
Uh I have a que I have a question. Um in the HOA. Like covenants or rules or whatever, will there be something about? Limitation on how many nights you can sleep there or unable to sleep there, I guess.
It's not as usual. They they won't be able to sleep there.
But it's twenty four hour access, correct?
That's the plan unless we have to do otherwise, but we we actually own a property right now in Waltham that's very similar that like has a. Office level, but it's industrial, it's owned industrial, and it just. You're not allowed to sleep there. It's just not. Not allowed in the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will point out that any work that they do inside their unit in terms of fitting it out or changes um. Would likely involve a building permit as well.
Right.
Well, good point.
And and just so the board is aware too, the applicant um has had numerous conversations with. The building inspector, the town planner. Uh we've also discussed this with the um. Board of Health agent because it is a unique use, so it didn't really fit um neatly into a particular category. So they've been working with these various um. Town officials to um, you know, kind of strategize on how to get this um. Or how to characterize this. And with all those conversations, I think everyone's been on board with the project as a whole.
Agreed.
David, we're gonna be voting on two. We're making two votes this evening. That's fair statement?
Yeah, there's a there is a a variance and a special permit. That's true.
Okay, so if we could go to the use side of it again, um I'm a little stuck. Uh because of the newness and I'm excited. Um I'm excited because. It's a unique idea, um bring something new to Southborough, but it's the use and it's the. Um. You know, how do I get my mind around what an event is? And. What's gonna happen i- in this building? Uh beside I I'm just I'm not I'm not. I don't have a handle on it is what I'm saying, and it sounds like it's unclear and it also sounds like the the H, you know, the documents are unclear. On rules. Um and how do I tackle that as much as I like this idea? It's like it's not ready.
Um.
Actually, I guess I'll ask the uh I'll ask the attorney for um because I understand what you're saying, Dolores.
Yeah.
Um since this is going to be a condo, there's going to be condo docs that get recorded with. With with the deed. Um can the attorney um explain to us that process and? Where those get vetted within the town?
So, um you know, part of it is it could be a condition that that you make that you would like um to see the rules and regulations. Um usually condo documents do not get vetted by municipality, but um if you um. Wanted certain conditions put into those those rules and regulations. Um and made that part of your decision, then those would flow into the condo docs, but um. You know, otherwise, other than the fact that they're on record and anyone, you know, can read them, they. Uh would not get pre-vetted. Um. But certainly any condition you made holds, so um. So the um I think Naja talked talked about some of the, you know, rules and regulations they were thinking about, you know, they're it's not living space. You can't. You can't sleep here, you know, you can't turn this into a second home. Um and I believe someone else talked about, you know, overnight parking. Um. But uh.
I had mentioned a um liquor license, I and I I really think that needs to get looked at um because I I think it may be needed. If you're having club events.
I could be wrong. So if I if I could, um I work for the select board and my. My co-partner there, she does all the liquor license. So if you have an event, you can apply for a one day liquor license to go in front of the board, the select board. Um who will then approve it after, you know, going through the packet. If you're not selling any alcohol, you don't need to have a a permanent liquor license like you would at a liquor store or restaurant.
Unless what if the clubhouse is, I I'm just trying to get a handle on it. That's but I I understand that part. It's just it's a clubhouse. Yeah. Uh it.
Or 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 even even the uh the the condo aspect of it for that matter. I think Katie's spot on, but they're not selling it. They don't need a liquor license. Um if you're in a condo. Uh that you own, I would think you you would have the right to bring in. Some drinks. I don't know that there'd be any regulation against that particular use, but um I guess I would look, I would view that no different than. You know, a a private business, you know, do they decide that they're going to? You know, have 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 drinks, you know, on Friday afternoon, just uh before they go home.
Long enough before they go home so that it's safe.
Long enough, yes.
Right, safety and security, right, safety and security. No, I understand it's a one-time event.
Yeah, yeah.
Clubhouse, but it's just a question. It's not a no. It's just a question, just a it. I don't know if that's a condition or or the condition is.
Well, I I I don't know that we need a condition because they they. They they would need a oh, I I can't see a liquor license being in their future. Like Katie said, that would be separate. That would be the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So um I think other than that, it's I I would, I guess I would characterize it as. We don't generally legislate something that's casual like that.
No, I agree on that, but there's a clubhouse.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Definitely be liquor.
Um. Want to see, Katie, do we do we have uh?
It's a use. It's just part of the use. I'm not saying right or wrong.
Well, actually, Dolores, I mean, darling buildings have clubhouses.
They do.
We don't worry about it there.
What what? I'm sorry, which buildings?
Uh like apartment complexes, like as an example.
Yeah.
Like, you know, Madison Place probably has a clubhouse somewhere or on that property.
Or Craig, at the very least, common area that doesn't.
Yeah.
That doesn't necessitate or imply that it's a drinking establishment.
Correct, exactly. Agreed, agreed.
Uh that's the point I'm trying to make is they they prob there are common areas in in condominiums and apartments and and things of that nature, and we would.
Yeah.
Wouldn't think of it in those scenarios either.
Right.
Um.
Mostly from safety and security, is it monthly, is it every other month? I'm just asking, just that I've got the use right, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if this this is unique, I think it's unique for.
That's what that's my issue.
Yeah.
What am I approving? That's all. That's it. It's not a judgment, you know, cheers.
Hmm. And if I may, we did go back.
I would like to ask, do we have anybody from the uh, the public butters or that who would like to speak? Do you know if there's anybody raising their hand? Uh, Katie?
So I don't see anyone raising their hand now. I do see Chad out there. He's been mentioned a few times. I think he's with the applicant. Um, I don't know if he still wants to speak. Um.
Yeah. Actually, can you list your team again so we can see if there's anybody beyond your team? There's five people in the audience.
Sure, we have um Nadja, we have Stephanie Conover. We have David Lapointe, we have Chad, who's the architect. And we have um the transportation engineer, um. Forgive me, and um, who is Andrew Arseneau.
Do we have two other people in the audience? Uh, a Brian and a Joseph. That are not part of the.
Joseph maybe from my office, so.
Okay.
Yep.
That that narrows it down to Brian as as a potential uh uh interested citizen. A Joseph Duquette, if he's from your office.
Joseph, yes, Joseph is from my office, yeah.
Okay, all right, I before, we've we've been, we're we're now we're into it now. I don't want to cut off. Anybody from being able to speak, but I thought it was appropriate that we see if anybody from the public who's in attending the hearing. Has questions or comments on the, you know, on this, on the use, on the application. Um, okay, all right, um, sorry, uh, so uh. Mike, your your hand seemed like it went up a couple of times. Did you have something more you wanted to add?
No, you got to, you, I just wanted to see if we had any butters that had any concerns, because I feel like we've been uh. Kind of rehashing some of the same times. We've been on this for over an hour.
Yeah.
I just want to be mindful of time.
Agreed, yeah, I I felt the same way.
Get the public's content in this and then um.
Right.
Uh. So I'll make a motion to end the public part of the hearing.
Second.
Um, all right, we have a motion to close the public part of the hearing with a second. All in favor, respond with I, uh, against is nay. Craig?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Doris?
Aye.
Uh, I can't see everybody. Paul?
Aye.
Uh, and William's eye. Uh, right, so that will close the the public part of the hearing. Um, uh, so. I don't know if we have any any further discussion we want to have as a board regarding this, or if we've really kind of hashed out all the questions.
Doris, Craig, did you guys want to add any con- uh, conditions to the to this?
So. I guess the question would be, where do we think those are the appropriate? Which one do we think is the appropriate one to condition? I think it's the the special permit. Uh, it's the one related to the use within this.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be, because I think, I think you're right. I think that the variance is really about the setback, so it would be the special permit, yeah. Correct.
So, um.
And 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 what do you, what do you, what do you think you want to have a as a condition? Are you just, is your primary concern the overnight parking?
Um, I think we had both uh, the overnight parking and um clearly define it as not a living space with no. No occupants, no, you know.
Okay.
No home like occupancy or whatever the proper term is.
I mean, is that? Uh, is that um, I'm just, I'm just wondering if that's redundant because it's zoned industrial? I mean, I do, do we, do we do that for any other, uh, any other building, I guess, is the question.
Um. I I don't know. I haven't done another building like this.
That's where we all are. And and I guess it would, it wouldn't hurt to come down on the side of. We stay something that's already not possible and.
Well, and and what they have planned. I mean, they.
Correct.
They clearly stay in their application that they don't expect it to be a a residence and people shouldn't be residing there, so.
Right.
Um, I mean, we could just leave it in the fact that they put that in their application.
Yeah, these, I mean, these are people who are incredibly well-heeled. I just can't imagine they'll be like, yeah, I'm just gonna stay at my car condo for the week.
Come on, you never know.
People have, people have friends that ask for places to stay.
Well, you're right about that, Jean.
Yep.
Um, okay, so um, which which are we taking first? The variance or the permit?
Uh, let's, let's take, uh, let's take the 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 variance strictly because that came first in the application.
Okay, um. I move to approve uh, the variance for. Two forty one, two forty five Turnpike Road, um, having found that. The lot configuration with slope and wetlands and. Simple fact that no one else remotely close to them in the district abide by this seventy five foot setback off of Parkerville Road.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, respond with I. Mike?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
All right, William's eye. Okay, thank you very much. Didn't forget anybody, right? It's terrible. I don't have, I need the, I need the view.
Oh, we could stop sharing probably at this point.
Yeah.
Whoever's sharing wants to stop that, we can see everybody again.
I think visually, visually challenged, all right, and I.
Look at that, all these bright shiny faces.
Yeah. Okay, so that that approves the variance that which brings us to the special permit, and that's, I think. Where if we want to put in conditions regarding, you know, no overnight parking allowed on site, uh, no. I don't know, I I don't know how you want to put it, uh.
Yeah.
Restrictions on on living space, no, no, no overnight, no staying there overnight.
No overnight guests.
No overnight guests.
Um, you know, we we want, we want the site to conform with the current intended use as far as an industrial use, end of story.
And obviously by no overnight parking, that is no overnight exterior parking. Obviously, you're being parked there overnight.
There's going to be cars parked there overnight.
Yeah.
It's the point of it.
Yes.
Guys, I don't even, I don't even have a super problem with overnight parking.
Problem with that. I mean, I just don't.
Yeah, because I could see where someone would be driving one car there and taking another car. I mean. I guess you pull it into your spot. I mean, I don't have a super problem.
Yeah, he meets the wife there and they've, they've got two cars.
Yeah, let's talk about that. You know, my, my thought was, um, or my concern isn't so much, you know, the person that came and took their car. Really, I I think I use this as an example, but I'm not really concerned that they took their car to a show and there's a car parked there for a couple of days. It's the person who is out of their four spaces and has another car that they leave on site with cover on it that's always there. You know, that they just kind of expand into one of the other spaces.
Good point.
Because no one's, no one within the condo association is really going to complain. And all of a sudden, we have a bunch of cars that are outside all the time.
Yeah, no, Craig, I'm not too sure. I mean, if you're part of a condo association, you, I mean, you might complain if someone else is. Taking advantage of that, so. I I don't.
With, there's only fifteen spaces.
Well, I think you can complain if it's part of your condo docs, that they're not allowed to do it.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
No long term storage of cars uh outside.
Right. Vehicles, any vehicle.
That's a nice way to phrase that, Mike, long term. What we're trying to avoid is someone leaving the country for a month.
Hmm.
Because uh, I've seen that in other parking garages. You just have to ask, you just have to ask the condo or, you know, the parking lot owners. I'm really coming back because you'll get, you'll get unregistered. I wouldn't say you're gonna get unregistered cars, but cars are a problem.
You know, and like Doris, I kind of shared like your concern with respect to events and what I really seen I'm excited about as far as the petitioner. Is you've got the office building next door with a large lot. And say, hey, listen, could we use this lot to have like a car show and event, which I is awesome. And I think it would be super cool, same time, like we want to make sure.
It's just for the members, Mike.
What's that?
It's for the members.
So, no, but are we, are we still discussing any sort of condition?
That's what I'm getting to. I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Get my arms around the, um, and it's because of the newness. I understand, I was like.
I get it. I see it.
Defining the event.
Don't want it to create something unexpected.
How to say that, David, um, I don't know if that's in the condo documents, which is the attorney had suggested that.
Well, but I think, I think like, like what she's saying.
Final condo documents. I I don't, I don't know the answer.
But it, but but again, if if that's something we have a concern with, we can state a condition and that is something that ultimately gets conveyed to condo docs. So I think it's just what we need to do is we need to agree what that is and be succinct.
That's what I'm trying to get to, is what makes sense.
Yeah.
For whatever it's worth, I don't have any concerns or or so, or needs for.
Okay, so. Um.
Do you, do you want to, Mike or or Craig, do you want to suggest something?
So, I mean, I I I like the suggestion of long term. You know, long term exterior parking of vehicles being a prohibition. Um, I don't think it, we can. Reasonably condition any sort of, any sort of restrictions on gatherings.
Yeah, I'm with you.
You know, on on events, you know, because they could be so wide and varied.
That's what I mean.
It's just.
I I I hear, it definitely raises an eyebrow for me. I understand Doris and both Jamie like mentioned. But there's only so far down the rabbit hole.
I I don't, I don't see where there's like enough room or parking there to have a huge event anyway.
They're gonna do it next, they're gonna do it next door.
Or the parking is next door and the gathering is onsite, whatever.
That would be, you know, I mean, if that's allowable by the town and agreeable to the neighborhood.
Let the town deal with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see where they have enough.
There's certain levels, it fits the people or a hundred people. You have to permit it, or we're not open to public comment.
Yeah.
We're done.
Yeah, we're done with that, so, yeah, I.
You want to make a, Craig, you want to make a motion on this?
On it.
Sure, so I move that we approve the special permit application for two forty one, two forty five Turnpike Road. Um, for the. Use uh specified in the application with the condition that. Their covenants and restrictions stipulate that there will be no overnight, no long term overnight parking. Exterior parking of vehicles, no long term exterior parking of vehicles.
Seconded.
Okay, we've got a motion in this with a second.
Um.
All in favor, all in favor, respond with uh, with I, Paul?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Doris?
Can can I modify the motion for Greg's um barriers?
We 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 uh, we have a motion and a second, so I think we have to take this motion now.
Okay, got it, got it, just procedural. So I'm an I for that.
Uh, Craig?
Aye.
Uh, he, uh, William's eye. Did I miss somebody? Paul, did I ask you?
He did, but still I.
Really, I'm having a hard time with the screen tonight or something. Uh, okay, well, I, that's uh, that is approved this for the special permit and for the variance. Thank you very much for your time. Congratulations.
Luck.
Good luck. Good luck.
I'd like to thank the applicant for doing something on the site.
Yeah.
Absolutely, way to go, Nadia.
Yeah.
Good, uh, good job.
Our job a lot.
It is well. And thank you for the comprehensive application. I appreciate that, Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Okay. All right, uh, so. It should be back to just the board and we have a couple sets of minutes that we need to approve. All right, thank you, Katie.
Five minute break, two minute break.
All right. Yeah, I say, I say we have, uh, we have, we we come back in three minutes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And Doris is back.
Nice dog. Mike, you like your dog?
I'm here.
Okay.
This is, this is Cooper. He wants this meeting and.
My, my dog is a Cooper too.
Nice, yeah. Good, everybody else has a dog.
He's the best, he's the best dog I've ever had.
Uh, I also, I also have a Hank. We have two dogs.
Oh, my goodness.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's help Cooper out. We've got.
All right.
We've got two sets of minutes, meeting minutes here. Let's take the, the first, let's take the first, the July twentieth. Uh, meeting minutes, uh, one fifty four Turnpike Road, bin bin donut stand, special permit for a sign. Um, as well as reorganization of the board, little discussion on definitions and sections of the zoning code. Any, any concerns with the uh, the minutes as written um for that meeting? I I myself didn't find any.
No concern from me.
No.
A motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion.
Slow, Paul, you're slow.
Wait a second. All in favor, uh, respond with I, Craig?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Uh, Mike?
Aye.
William's eye. All right. Um, okay, and the second set of meeting minutes is. August seventeenth, this was the Wendy's turned into an sign. Uh, as well as the two fifty Turnpike Road special permit for um, storage units. Uh, again, I did not have any issues with the minutes as written. Anybody else have any, any issues?